The following is a production of Keri TV, the Town of Keri's government access channel.
Call to order the March 12th meeting of the Keri Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Mayor Protim Smith for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Benachtí la le porig quig púbal boilhá Keri ersún dal la coher an vi in aran. That was Gaelic. That was supposed to be Gaelic. The original language of Ireland, in English, that translates to greetings to the citizens of Keri on behalf of your sister city in Mead, Ireland. And for those of you watching who speak Gaelic, please accept my apology. I'm sure what you just heard left you speechless. Now, our friends in Ireland were reminding us what a great time of the year it is. You know, the snow's gone, daylight savings is here, and it's the time for celebrations galore. And it all starts Tuesday on St. Patrick's Day at all the pubs in Keri. However, the town has some things going on too that I think is important that you know about. On Thursday, March 19th, with an encore on Sunday, March 22nd, The Keri will show a modern-day classic Irish film, Waking Ned Divine. Now, those of you that don't know about the movie, Ned lives in a very remote village in Tullamore and wins the National Lottery. And what transpires after that is just classic Irish humor. And don't worry, it is PG-rated. On Friday, March 20th, at the Keri Arts Center, the marvelous music series features the Irish Tenors. And then finally, on April 10th, also at the Keri Arts Center, the Sister Cities of Keri along with the town will be hosting the Second Annual Kaili. The Kaili is a Celtic festival which celebrates Scottish and Irish culture. It's an evening of music and dance. Last year, it was sold out. And all are performed by local Celtic artists. You don't want to miss it, and tickets are going fast. Here in Keri, we're truly blessed to have a diverse citizenry, actively involved in all of our sister-city efforts. Not only do we have a sister city in Ireland, but we also have one in Taiwan, France, Canada, and as well as some emerging new friendships in Turkey and Germany. And let me close again with a Gaelic, a traditional, short and sweet Irish proverb. Na ligathor mairic arivon air in si ar goradish. Translated in English, "May the hinges of our friendship never grow rusty." Thank you. And now join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We're now at Agenda Item 1.3, Adoption of Our Agenda. Before we do adopt the agenda, we have one item. The applicant for the Dellinger PDD property, which is Item 6.5, has requested to table this item to a future council. This item was tabled at the February 12th, 2015 meeting. If it is the pleasure of the council to table this request, a motion to remove from the table and to table the Dellinger PDD property to a future council meeting is needed. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, that was, I'll check with the town attorney before we move on. That was a motion to bring it off the table and put it back on the table since it was time for this meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, so we don't need a separate motion?
No.
Okay.
Nor do we need a coaster.
So that takes us to the adoption of the amended agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion?
A second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're now Agenda Item 2.1. It's a presentation from the cap team. And we're honored to have members of our citizens assisting police, which we call our cap team, with us this evening for this presentation. So at this time, I'll invite Chief Bazemore and the cap team representatives and Mr. Shiver to join me at the podium. We have something we're going to see here in a minute. It's always very special what these volunteers do for us. There are so many cap team volunteers. They're almost one-for-one with our police members. That's how many volunteers we have. Not only do they keep our officers in the more serious roles, but they save taxpayers tons of money. And that's what they're here to display or to present to the town, is the money they have saved us this year. Right, Chief?
Good evening, Council. Thank you. This evening, we have Dennis Dean, the president of our cap team, and our cap team members are in the audience with us this evening. This is an interesting opportunity where they actually present to us the money that they've saved the town. But it's also a time for us to recognize and thank them for the work that they have done to help us keep Keri one of the safest places to live in the United States. We have 178 cap team members, and this, in 2014, they volunteered 5,585 hours. So a lot of hours they volunteered, and I'm going to turn it over to Dennis Dean for the presentation.
The amount, whoops, $135,847.
Wow.
Based on our hours converted to the cost of a new officer.
It's amazing.
You can get it in your wallet.
Thank you so much. We'll find a way to use that money. Would all the cap team members that are here, please stand up so we can recognize you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your work, and God bless you for helping us and believing in the town of Keri and our police department.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So our next presentation, I'm going to bring up Mr. Lyman Collins, who's going to talk about Applause Youth Theater. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Applause Keri Youth Theater began in 1999 with its first production, Charlotte's Web. It just completed its 36th production last month with The Secret Garden. In that time, over 1,200 young people have either performed or been backstage with Applause Keri Youth Theater. An additional, close to 10,000, have taken classes or been in our camps or done other things. One of the great things about Applause is the collaborative nature. It illustrates that is true theater, not just those in front of the, in front of the audience, but those who are behind as well. And it takes really all of them, plus a great audience. Our citizens of Keri are great supporters. Both performances of The Secret Garden sold out last month. So I issue a special invitation to you all and everyone in Keri to come to our 37th production, The Phantom Tollbooth, which will be in May. But we're here tonight because Keri Applause Youth Theater has been recognized by the North Carolina Theater Conference with a special award. And I would like to invite Mia Self, who's the board chair for the North Carolina Theater Conference and an assistant professor of theater at North Carolina State University, and Rachel Baransky, who is our Keri's youth theater coordinator, to come to the podium. They're going to present the award. Before Mia actually presents the award, I want to just say one thing. She'll tell you more about the award in just a second, but it is the Constance Welsh Award. And I have to say that when I found out that we were receiving that particular award, I really welled up with pride because Connie Welsh was actually one of my acting mentors and someone who directed me in productions many years ago. But to know that we have received an award that is memorializing her means all that much more. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mia.
And I just want to clarify, I'm actually just a staff member at NC State. For people who are concerned about faculty rank, I'm not, not one of them there. But I am excited to represent the North Carolina Theater Conference. It's a statewide service organization and professional association that advocates for the theater industry. NCTC membership includes middle schools, high schools, colleges, and universities, as well as professional and community theater and individuals. We produce numerous events during the year, play festivals, audition, and conferences. NCTC's work strengthens the theater industry and inspires tomorrow's artists, audiences, and advocates. Each year, our Board of Directors presents the NCTC awards to companies, schools, and individuals that have exhibited leadership roles in their communities. In addition to that, they demonstrate artistic, professional, or educational excellence. It is my great honor to be here tonight to present the 2014 NCTC Constance Welsh Theater for Youth Award to Applause Keri Youth Theater. This award is named in honor of artist and teacher Constance Welsh. Connie founded both the Territorial Players, which is now the professional touring company at Children's Theater of Charlotte, and Davidson Community Players. Connie inspired many artists and theaters that fondly remember her for her tireless support. We are thrilled to honor Applause Keri Youth Theater with Connie's award. Housed in the Keri Arts Center, Applause produces multiple mainstage events each year and provides acting, musical theater, and technical theater classes and camps. The programs at Applause explore and develop theater skills and encourage students to share ideas, to think creatively, and most importantly, to work collaboratively. We are proud that the Town of Keri and the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources invest so strongly in this program. It's a terrific example statewide of the great things a municipality can do by investing in the arts. NCTC honors Rachel Baransky, the incredible teaching artist, and the entire staff of Keri Arts Center and Applause Keri Youth Theater for their artistic quality, excellence in delivering exceptional educational programming, and the Town Council's commitment to fostering future artists and art supporters. We also thank all of you for your support for this outstanding arts program and arts organization. We hope that you will continue to support Applause Keri Youth Theater with your time and your resources. And without further ado, and on behalf of the entire NCTC Board of Directors, I am thrilled to present the 2014 NCTC Constance Welsh Theater for Youth Award to Applause Keri Youth Theater. Thank you.
Few words?
Just thank you. Thank you for your support as always, and it's nice to recognize the citizens of Keri too for their support. When we opened The Secret Garden after much weather turmoil, that I told the audience there, the sold-out audience, that it was for them. And over the years, we would never have been able to serve so many children without the support of the community and you. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the honor of bestowing that award on this town. We're very grateful to have an award named after such a special person. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move to Agenda Item 2.3. Most of you might not know, or maybe you do know, that next week is Sunshine Week, which is a big week for us here in Keri. And I'm happy to read a proclamation recognizing March 15th through 21st, 2015, as Sunshine Week here in Keri. Whereas Sunshine Week is a national initiative to open a dialogue about the importance of open government and freedom of information, Sunshine Week is a good public relations opportunity to empower citizens to play an active role in their government, which can make their lives better and our community stronger. Whereas, an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and their government's ability to effectively serve its citizens. Officials and employees at the Town of Keri understand and support both the spirit and the letter of North Carolina's sunshine laws. Whereas, two of the town's statement of values reflect the strong commitment to maintaining a culture of openness and transparency, which is directly aligned with sunshineweek.org national initiative, open government is good government. And these are: Our organization exists to serve our citizens. We will be open, ensure access, encourage involvement, and be accountable to our citizens. We will be honest, ethical, and diligent. Our actions will comply with local, state, and federal laws. Whereas, the Town of Keri commits during Sunshine Week and throughout the year to work diligently to enhance the public's access to government records and information, to ensure that all official meetings are fully noticed and open to the public, and to proactively reach out to our public to learn how we can improve in this area. Whereas, the Keri Town Council fully supports the 2015 Sunshine Week activities for the town staff, which includes a variety of informational sessions, such as interactive activities with an open government theme and focus on the importance of good records management. Now therefore, I Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Keri, on behalf of the entire Keri Town Council, do hereby proclaim March 15th through 21st as 2015 Sunshine Week in the Town of Keri as an expression of support for the open government initiative that is consistent with the Town of Keri's culture and practices proclaimed this 12th day of March 2015. Mr. Shiver, on behalf of the council, I want to commend you for your leadership to promote open government. It's, I think we're leaders in the state in this area, and open government philosophy must come from the top, must come from your seat. And you do a good job of making sure that everyone knows that we're open and honest government. And we see this based on the proactive measures the town staff does under your leadership to educate officials and staff about all these important laws. So thank you very much. All right. We now move to the Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting. Our next agenda item is called Public Speaks Out. We have included instructions to speak at this forum on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic unless it's a public hearing. There's a three-minute time limit, which I will strictly enforce. There's a timer located on the speaker's podium. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the time expires, the yellow light will turn into a flashing red light, and the speaker should immediately conclude their comments at that time. And I'll interrupt you to help you, remind you that your time has expired. I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that groups allow a spokesperson to speak on their behalf to reduce repetitive comments. And I thank everyone in the audience for respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from our meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, then I would invite our first speaker forward at this time.
Been about 10 years since I've been here, but I'm still alive and real happy about that. I'm Bob Butler, and I live at 1181 Crabtree Crossing. And as a real tribute to the town's efficiency, I woke up this morning at sunrise to a chainsaw running underneath my bedroom window and went to the web and discovered we have a noise hearing issue on the agenda tonight. So here I am on that. And just want to provide some information that you may not be aware of. We have an excellent sound ordinance. We have excellent enforcement. There's no villains in the story I'm going to tell you. This is a lot of people trying to do the right thing. I live on Prestonwood Country Club, the 50th of Highlands Course, and the manager, Matt Massey, was on the phone apologizing profusely, as he has the four or five other times I've been awoken. It's early as 5:00 a.m. Sunday morning with wood chippers and blowers. So everybody's trying to do the right thing. But there's a gap in our process that I want to bring to your attention. I know the issue tonight is more of a clarification, but I think that this is an opportunity to take another look at your processes and see if we can improve the quality of life in our neighborhood. So what happens is, the rules actually don't allow this, but rules get broken usually due to new personnel policies. But one, one of these things happened, I called the Keri Police Department because the club is in Keri. And I give my address, and I said, oh, sorry, you're in Morrisville. You have to call the Morrisville Police Department. So I called Morrisville, and they said, well, I'm sorry, the noise is coming from Keri. And then they send, Morrisville will send the police to me because I'm in their, in their area. I didn't know I was in Morrisville to the closing of my house. But anyways, I'm in Morrisville. And they said I can't do anything. If he's shooting across city lines, I could take action, but a misdemeanor like that, they can't take action. So the police force is very frustrated because there's not a clear policy on how to deal with these extra things. And the other comment I want to make is the sound ordinance doesn't deal with specific equipment. It tries to deal with decibels. But it should, it should deal with wood chippers, blowers, and chainsaws. I ask you this question: Would any of you go out and run a chainsaw at 7:00 a.m.? Where you have a neighbor's bedroom 50 feet from your, your, of course not. But the sound ordinance allows that to happen. Also, the town takes the right to cut greens as to do process, I mean, golf course, to do everything as early as 6:00 a.m. So I'd ask you to include this equipment, re- this, and give the police the right authorities so they can take action. A couple tickets will stop this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Next speaker, please.
My name is Terry Heath. I live at 919 Old Thompson Creek Road in Apex, which happens to be in Chatham County. My property backs up to the Wood Hall subdivision, which has plans currently in the town. And there is a road that will be in the plan to connect to Percy Property, which will run about 1,300 cars estimated through that area with two subdivisions. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the quasi-judicial review process, and I would like the council to consider, in the process, to add an option for the applicant. And that option would be a single, specific, focused review of the plan that affects that condition needing relief only. As the process currently works, the council can and does look at all aspects of the plan. So why should this be considered? Well, first of all, the town planning department already looks at the plans and reviews the plans. So it seems that it's a waste of somebody's money and time to have it reviewed a second time, or a third time, or a fourth time, once it gets to the quasi-judicial review. The second reason this would be a good idea is because the developer or builder has too much at risk when the council gets to look at the entirety of their plan, which costs them time, money, the opportunity to lose any of the agreed plan that had already been acknowledged or accepted. And thirdly, the current plan requirements of the town, a project can get backed into a corner where the requirements really don't make sense, but there's no way out because the developer-builder won't go for a judicial review because of the complexity of the analysis and review of the plan. And a solution could be, in this backing into a corner, some flexibility on the quasi-judicial review process. Where only one single focus on the issue is looked at, it then gets resolved and moves forward. The quasi-judicial review is supposed to offer relief. Instead, it makes the applicant lose sleep, time, money, doesn't offer the relief, and then they don't take advantage of that. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and move to our consent agenda. This is Item 4 on your agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to read our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda this evening, we have Minutes: Ratification of Resolutions for E38 Elementary School and All-Stars Children's Academy; Amendment to Traffic Schedule 14: Speed Limits; Amendment to Interlocal Agreement with Wake County Animal Center; Scheduling Public Hearings for Honor-Initiated Annexation Petitions for Veterinary Referral Center LLC 14A21 and Leicester Property Annexation 14A25; Scheduled Public Hearing for Citizen Participation Schedule for Fiscal Year 16 Annual Action Plan; Regional Call Center Transit Agreement; Contract Award for Kit Creek Pump Station and Morris Branch Pump Station Improvements Project; Amendment to Policy Statement 153: School Speed Zones; Recognition of Additional Developer Payment for the Copperleaf Reserve Subdivision Sewer Extension; Easement Agreements with the United States Postal Service for Academy Street Improvements; Keri-Raleigh Water Supply Interconnection Project WT1195. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This takes us to public hearings. Same rules for public hearings applied, that, applied for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now get five minutes instead of three. Our first public hearing is an Honor-Initiated Annexation Petition 14A18 Darlington Advisors LLC. Mr. Nicholas of our staff will present this item. We're going to open the public hearing, and Council may take action on this item. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. This request is for annexation of 14.8 acres of property located at 3800 This request is for annexation of 14.8 acres of property located at 3,800 Green Level West Road, approximately fourteen hundred feet west of the Green Level West Road and Green Level Church Road intersection. The property is in Cary's ETJ, and it's currently zoned residential 40, and it's also within the Conservation Residential Overlay District. The request is associated with Subdivision Plan 14 SB26, which proposes a total of twenty-three lots.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for 14A18 Darlington Advisors LLC Annexation, and I would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve Annexation 14A18.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to our next public hearing. This is item 5.2. It's an owner-initiated annexation petition 14A20 William Yates Hares. Mr. Nicholas of our staff will once again present the item, then we'll open the public hearing, and council may take action. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. This request is for annexation of sixteen acres of property located on the north side of Green Level West Road, approximately twenty-five hundred feet west of the Green Level West Road and Green Level Church Road intersection. The property is in Cary's ETJ, and it's currently zoned residential 40, and it's also within the Conservation Residential Overlay District. The request is associated with Subdivision Plan 14 SB28, which proposes a total of twenty-two lots.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for 14A20, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Annexation Petition 14A20.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next public hearing is for owner-initiated annexation petition 14A24 Habitat for Humanity of Wake County Incorporated. Once again, Mr. Nicholas will introduce this item, and we will hold the public hearing, and we may take action on this item. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. This request is for annexation of approximately .53 acres of property located on the west side of Evans Road, north of the Evans Road and Rochelle Road intersection, as shown on the map here. The property is in Cary's ETJ, and it's currently zoned transitional residential conditional use. Request is associated with Development Plan 14 SP77, which proposes a subdivision of the lot and sewer extension.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for 14A24, and I would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll just make a quick comment. I don't love it when we have, we already know Evans Road is a busy road, and now we're setting ourselves up to have a driveway cut added. That's what appears. Maybe it's a flag lot, but I don't think it probably is. We're going to add a driveway cut onto Evans Road, which is so busy. I would have much rather have kept those two parcels together with a driveway going out onto Rochelle. I just think it would be a more appropriate use.
I think we talked about that at...
There's already two lots.
Right.
The lot that's outlined is already separate from the lot that's below it.
Oh, it is.
Yes.
Are they going to drive that driveway down to Rochelle, or are they going to put the driveway cut on?
I'm not sure. I believe it may come out onto Evans, but I think it may be combined, or a combined driveway between the two lots that they're creating.
Okay. Okay.
So try to minimize the curb cuts.
Okay. Wasn't this right next to the one that have a shared driveway, correct?
Right. Correct.
So is this one a shared driveway, do you think?
I believe there was a condition regarding that.
Okay. All right. I feel better about that, then. Okay. Thanks for reminding me.
Other comments, questions, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Annexation Petition 14A24.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. We now move to our last public hearing, the Lester Property at Pittard Sears Road Rezoning Request. We're going to hear from staff and hear their report. We're going to allow our applicant to explain the request in public hearing. Council will not take action on this item. Instead, we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request to rezone approximately twenty acres located at 336 Pittard Sears Road. Subject property is shown here, highlighted in red. It's developed with a detached residential home and associated accessory buildings. Here's another image of the property located on the west side of Pittard Sears Road. The site is impacted by a stream buffer, according to Cary's most recent GIS maps, and field determination of such features will be required at the time of development plan review. According to Cary's Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan, the subject property is not directly impacted by any roadside trails or greenway trails, but there are some located in close proximity to the site, as shown here with the dash blue line. And the property is approximately a thousand feet south of O'Kelly Chapel Road, which is a thoroughfare. There are no transit routes in the vicinity. Cary's land use plan designation for the subject property is medium-density residential. The property is part of the Joint Chatham-Cary Land Use Plan. There is a note that allows up to four dwelling units per acre, per the joint plan. The existing zoning is Chatham County R1, and the applicant is proposing transitional residential conditional use. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the use to detached residential age-restricted housing and associated amenities, and they have introduced a language that says a restrictive covenant will comply with federal and state laws, including the Fair Housing Act, and they've offered a condition that the density shall not exceed 3.1 dwelling units per acre. Property owners within eight hundred feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the rezoning request. Because the property is not located in Cary's ETJ or corporate limits, it's not eligible for a protest petition. At the time the presentation was prepared, there were no inquiries, but since then, we did hear from some citizens who were concerned about construction activity with an adjacent development. Not so much this rezoning, but there is ongoing construction activity taking place on Pittard Sears Road. We heard from citizens who were concerned about the blasting going on out there for the infrastructure, so I put the caller in touch with our fire department, with Kenneth Cottle and the Inspections and Permits Department, and they were able to help explain the rules and procedures associated with getting a blasting permit. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward, and then, following the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granton. At this time, we'll invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates. I'm here tonight representing the property owner. Ms. Granton's done an excellent job describing what's being proposed. I'll just hit a couple of high points. This is within the joint Cary-Chatham plan. The density in the plan calls for up to four units per acre. We have capped the density at 3.1. We have also provided a zoning condition limiting the use to detached residential age-restricted housing. The condition that we offered is in a format that the town asked us to look at providing, because it does meet their, the legal requirements in terms of age-restricted housing. The development to the north is also approved for age-restricted housing, and development is occurring, as Ms. Granton pointed out. The property to the east is Carolina Preserve, which is also an age-restricted housing development. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use plan. We believe it's an excellent use of the property, given the type of the development that is occurring in the area, and with the zoning conditions and the requirements in the LDO. The adjoining properties will be adequately protected from any development that occurs on the property. I'm here to answer questions. There's also a representative from the company that would be doing the development, as is the engineer, if you have questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Ms. Granton has concluded her comments, so we'll open the public hearing, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Mayor Weinberg, town council members, my name is Chris Reisig. I am a property owner in Chatham-Glen subdivision, which is to the west of the property we're talking about. Thank you for your, the opportunity to discuss this development. Before I start, I'd like to take a moment to shout out a gratitude to your law enforcement officers and your first responders. Even though I'm Chatham County, I see and hear them all the time. I am a disabled American combat veteran. I understand what it means to serve, and I just wanted to express my thanks to them and all your people in uniform. As with this development, I, as Glenda didn't mention, I am to the west. Right now, I have already been impacted by this development. Specifically, the sewer line that will be serving it is running to the east of my property. It's abutting my property. My dogs would have really liked to know about that blast announcements, because they've been getting shaken up lately. I'm also a little perplexed that we were never notified that this utility line was going to be run there. I'm sure there's various regulations that'll apply to easements that are given and things like that, but from a neighbor point of view, I was a little thrown off by that. Be that as it's may, the other impact is, they mentioned a stream buffer on this property. Well, that stream buffer, when it gets to my property, turns into a very distinct horseshoe-shaped creek. We actually call it Goat Creek, because the applicant, Ms. Rosa, her goats would wander down there, and that's how it got its name. It's a very pretty part of our property. We have several bridges and walkways. You guys call them greenways, I do believe. Several natural features that we've named after our children and other things, Jeremy's Rock, Picnic Point, and so forth. I've had deer from fawn to buck on there, all sorts of wildlife, with other with four legs, birds, and I've even been fortunate enough over the years to seen bald eagles on my property. Since this construction started, and I do appreciate Glenda passing this along to the developers for them to reach back out to me, but since this project has started, what I've experienced on my creek, well, it used to flow clear, now runs kind of a beige color. On really rainy days, or after this past storm we've had, it turns into a really brown, muddy flow. Instead of egrets and frogs and turtles, now I'm having silt runoff, stinky foam that I've never had before, and the occasional cruiser cup comes floating down, the styrofoam cups from cruisers. All things considered, it's kind of rude, and as we head forward, I really would like to see measures taken to ensure that when this is all said and done, I still have a nice, beautiful landscape feature on my property that we worked hard to maintain. With respect to the staff report, very detailed, and the only comment I would make on that would be the landscape buffer between the two neighborhoods. Specifically, they recommend a Type B buffer. I think when you look at the true density difference between the two properties, you will see that three-to-one dwelling units to one dwelling unit to five acres is a very, very big difference. I think based on your design standards, the Type A might be a more appropriate, but I do understand this is a continuation of a previous project, and there's probably plans that would flow into that. But that was just my opinion as far as the landscape buffer. Excuse me. This next comment, Mr. Mayor, I thought very long and hard of how I want to say it, but I've stood here before. You guys have a development going on to the southwest of me. I welcomed you to our neighborhood as you started moving that way. I stressed our belief in that joint use document between our two municipalities, stressed the difference in the densities, and really requested a nice buffer between our two areas. Several council members and yourself also spoke on that subject. However, by the time your document was approved, the cul-de-sacs have been turned into road spurs, and instead of a continuous Type A buffer between our neighborhoods, we're now going to have big open spaces with a big orange sign that says "Future Road Expansion" that's now aimed right at our neighborhood. I just really didn't think that was too neighborly, and a lot of us did not. We understand how the roads and the transportation concerns look forward into the future. We truly do, but that one really hit us kind of hard. And after hearing your comments on the sunshine week, that just really kind of made me want to stress that we did not, as we go forward, we hope we take better steps on this. So I see my time is up. I sincerely thank everybody, and you do have a beautiful town up around our area, so thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments.
Go ahead. I have one question. I know, obviously, I ride this area quite a bit. There's quite a bit of construction going on. Is the plan to have sidewalks on both sides of Pittard Sears? Or is it, because right now, it's on one, and it stops actually before it gets too far down. I was just curious what the plan is for that, because there's quite, this is a, right next to Carolina Preserve, this is a, a large number of people walk this entire area, and I'm seeing them walk on areas that do not have sidewalks.
Per the comprehensive transportation plan, it's required on one side.
So it's on the east side? Is that correct, or?
I believe that is correct. Yes. Yes. It's on the east side.
I'd really, I'd be interested in, as we move forward, ensuring that these really heavily walkable areas have sidewalks on both sides of the street. I cannot believe we don't have it on the other side.
I agree. And I just wonder if we understood, when that transportation plan was set up with sidewalks on one side, if we understood the number of people that would be living in this influence area? Because there are a ton of people out here. One side of the sidewalk doesn't seem at all right, so we ought to be revisiting that.
I don't know what the plan for that would be. Is that, do we have a review scheduled for the Conference of Transportation Plan as part of Imagine Cary, or how will we be doing that?
Tim's nodding vigorously.
All right. So I'll look forward to it, then.
Yeah. I appreciated the gentleman's comments just a minute ago. He was very reasonable, and I really appreciate that. Can you help me better understand the buffer between this site and his property and the other properties to the west?
It would be per the ordinance between a subdivision that's got lots that are less than 8,000 square feet, would be a Class III land use. When they're adjacent to a subdivision that's got lots that are 8,000 square feet or greater, that's a Class II land use. Per the LDO, there's a 30-foot Type B buffer required between those two developments. So what he stated was accurate, and that's what's listed in the staff report, is that's the requirement per the LDO.
And that's what's being proposed at this point?
The applicant's not proposed any conditions other than meeting the ordinance requirements.
Okay. I would agree with the speaker's comments that one home per five acres versus 8,000 square foot lots or less is, it's a pretty significant transition, even though they're both detached residential uses, so anything that the applicant could do to improve that, I would look very favorably upon.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you. I mean, usually, we see Type A buffers between different uses. To me, this is such a stark difference. It's a different use, to me. I mean, this is not really like uses when you're talking about one home per five acres plus backing up to 3.1 per acre. It's a huge difference.
I agree. I have a question for you regarding the silt that's going into the creek. Are the measures being taken failing, or what's going on?
That first report, I've heard of this, but I made a note. We'll certainly follow up with our zoning enforcement officers and have them take a look at the, there are required silt fences and tree protection fences during developments, so I made a note to contact our zoning compliance officers, and I'm sure they'll get out there and inspect.
Are our standards set up that we would expect no silt to be running into the creek, that it would stay clear?
I would need to defer to someone with more expertise in that area. I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's some disturbance to a stream. We have, we have someone here tonight who can help. Thank you.
In construction, there are measures set up for sediment erosion control. It takes care of the sediment, but there's still turbidity.
Okay.
Okay.
How long does it take for that turbidity to settle back down, so a creek would run clear again?
It's based on, you know, how long the construction activity will take place.
Okay.
Okay.
And how much rainfall there is.
Okay.
It does beg the question, you know, are the measures stringent enough? I mean, you know, we're out here in an area that's, you know, pretty pristine, and I was quite surprised at the comments about the silt. I think before it gets to P and Z, I think it ought at least be looked at and assessed, and P and Z ought to be brought up today, you know, whatever the facts are, they are. I just, I just think it, that ought to be reoperated.
That's a good idea.
Other comments? Okay. This will go to a future planning and zoning board meeting. Do we have any idea?
It depends on whether or not there's new zoning conditions introduced, and we'll make sure we have an updated report from a field inspection for you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is the comprehensive plan consistency statement for rezoning 14 REZ 23 Keller property. First, we need to remove this item from the table. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I don't know if you have a report.
Just a very brief reminder, the subject rezoning case had a valid protest petition and therefore required a supermajority vote if it was to be approved. It did not get a supermajority vote. The vote was tied three to three, so it thereby failed for lack of a supermajority. So this is an administrative process requirement to wrap up the paperwork associated with that case.
Right, and the wording on this did change, and I'm assuming everybody had a good chance to read that over. Are there any questions for staff or comments or a motion?
You're looking for a motion? Well, I voted against it.
Well, it's just a motion to say that this is what we did.
That we were consistent with our plan by voting against it.
Right.
We didn't break our ordinances by voting against it.
So by voting for this, you're not really voting for the...
You're affirming our consistency. I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt the comprehensive plan consistency statement for rezoning 14 REZ 23.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. Any questions about what the consistency statement is? Maybe the town attorney can help us. Still seems to be a lot of concern about the consistency statement.
That's merely a procedural wrap-up. The vote has been taken on the rezoning, and this is just to say that the action that was taken was because fewer than a majority felt that the criteria for a rezoning were met, and it's really not staking anyone out on any one position, but just stating the basis for the vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now move to discussion item 6.2 for the gigabit service provider impact. Ms. Cove will present this item. Council may take action. Ms. Cove.
Yes, good evening, council, and thank you. I guess it wouldn't really be an understatement to say that there is a lot of excitement about gigabyte service coming to our area. With that excitement, though, comes a lot of work, and staff has been working with several of these providers to get a better understanding of their needs and their schedules in order to quantify the potential resource implications to the town. Each of the applications is obviously very different, but what we've done in general is look at all potential fiber locations within the public right-of-way and what resources they would take to allow that encroachment into the right-of-way. It's really in four main areas that are outlined in your staff report. The first is the review and approval of an actual encroachment permit. The second is locating of all town utilities prior to construction, so hopefully those utilities are not hit during construction. The third area is inspections, and the fourth area is customer service. So with the information that we currently have available, staff tried to actually quantify the costs associated with the additional resources, and for the remaining four months of this fiscal year, we anticipate those costs to be $282,900. I'm sorry about that. And so staff recommends that the requested funding be allocated in the following manner: for $50,400 to Public Works operations into their contracted services account, $11,000 to Public Works and their operations for overtime for locating, $206,500 to transportation facilities contracted services, and $15,000 to water resources also in contracted services. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
I only have, I guess, more of a comment. What is the policy or accommodation that's promised to folks that request permits such as this? Is there a guaranteed level of service for anyone?
Level of service in terms of permit applications and timeframes?
Exactly.
There has not been to date. Traditionally, we process them as we get them.
So there's no expectation by the permit requester that we'll get back to them 24 hours a week?
There's not. There is a desire, and as indicated in the staff report, Google has requested a 10-day turnaround for their permit applications.
What has our metric been up to date? What do we do on average today?
Typically, it's taking four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks. So this, so then some of this is to ensure that we meet their guideline, their requested guideline?
Definitely all that extra resources to try to ensure that we can meet some shortened timeframes.
Okay. I'd like to thank staff. I don't think any of the other municipalities, the other eight municipalities that are part of this, the announcement, and Google's not the only one, obviously AT&amp;T is also doing it, and several others, I think staff did an excellent job by going forward and trying to anticipate, rather than be caught behind the wheel, trying to anticipate what the workload would be, what the cost would be to the town, and also to anticipate the workload. I think you all have done something that none of the other municipalities have done yet. I really commend you. I think the rest of the municipalities will take what you've done and use it as a template, so I think you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think any of the municipalities have as many lines underground, too, and that's going to be very critical in all of this. You know, we've got to be well-coordinated. There's going to be a lot of digging going on, and just look what happened on, on, was it Killarney Farm Road just a couple of months ago, where they just caught the main water line, and we dropped instantly. Quite, you know, it's good we had all the failsafe systems, but it was still a major, a major error, you know, where, and they had all the maps. So this is going to be, it's going to be a wild and crazy ride, I think, but hang in there, and I agree with Lori. Thanks, thanks for being prepared for it.
I'll make a motion, unless there's any other comment.
Make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of the items, the $50,400 to Public Works for contracted services, the $11,000 to operations overtime, the $206,500 for contracted services, and the $15,000 for additional contract services.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to item 6.3, the Phillips property at Indian Wells Road. Is there a motion to remove this from the table for discussion? There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Staff's going to give us a report. We've already heard from the planning and zoning boards for their recommendation. I see our chairs here in case we have additional questions. Council may take action on this item. This item only requires a simple majority vote. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. As you may recall, this is a property that's 46.67 acres located at Indian Wells and NC-55 Highway. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow, and this aerial view showing the existing development and vacant portions of the parcel. Land use plan designation is predominantly medium-density residential. There is a small corner of the property with an office and institutional designation. Existing zoning is residential 40. The applicant's proposed transitional residential conditional use. Proposed zoning conditions would be that there be a maximum density of three dwelling units per acre. This is a reduction from when you saw this initially at the first public hearing, when they were seeking four dwelling units per acre, so there was a reduction. They also, since the initial public hearing when this was presented, they added a condition that they shall not submit real estate plots to subdivide more than 10 lots prior to January 1, 2016. They offered a condition to provide a 40-foot type A buffer along the eastern property line, and that the rear of any attached residential structures adjacent to Indian Wells Road or NC-55 shall include a minimum of 40% masonry on the facade.
Excuse me, Deborah, was that a type B or a type A?
A 40-foot type B buffer along the eastern property line. Also, since you saw this last, the applicant introduced a condition that the permitted uses shall be restricted to age-restricted housing and associated amenities, and there's some additional detail in the staff report that explains how that would be implemented and monitored by staff with a restrictive covenants. There's a number of traffic improvements that were identified in the traffic study and a number of mitigations that addressed those. In staff's observation of this case and other associated cases, there was a concern about the cumulative impacts of the multiple rezoning cases in the vicinity, and we'd like to point out that this applicant, along with the YMCA case, which was approved recently for the Crosspoint Church, and the Waukina Road case, which is still being considered, the applicant's entered into an arrangement where each one of them took a portion of the traffic mitigations, and that's detailed in your staff report. And this shows you the location of the Highcroft Drive Collector Avenue that's in the general vicinity of the subject property, and with all the activity and rezoning cases going on in this area, we pointed this out so that council was aware of where that future Collector Road was and what sort of impacts the cumulative effect of all these rezoning cases had. So the case before you tonight, 14 REZ 12, does not have any frontage along that road, but it was important that you be aware of what was happening in the area. The planning and zoning board recommended this for approval by a vote of seven to one. And this concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is available if you have any questions.
Okay, very good. Council members, questions, comments?
I talked to the applicant months and months ago. This one's been hanging around a long time, hasn't it? And I indicated to them that the, I would support this only if it were age-restricted, and due to the lot size and, of course, the location. And I think it's remarkable that we have a condition now that it is age-restricted. I think we do need housing for that population segment. Of course, it minimizes school impact, which is a big thing for all of us. Three per acre is at the very low end of medium density. I think they've done a great job conditioning this, so it has my support.
I tend to agree with you. I don't normally like the transitional, unless it's actually transitioning from something. However, this is dealing with age-restricted, and I do see the benefit of transitional zoning here, and it doesn't impact our schools, which is big, and that's, as Ms. Robinson brings up every time we get a rezoning case, we're responsible, even though we don't have direct impact on schools, we're responsible for schools and roads. And so this is less, it's the minimum, it's the least amount of density possible, no impact on schools, and the least amount of road impact possible, so I'm going to support this as well.
Yeah, I'd say these improvements are big improvements. I mean, it's, it's nice to see conditions made that take great strides in improving a project, and I think it did.
I wouldn't agree that it's the lowest density possible, but it's...
In the land use plan, without changing the land.
Right, medium-density.
And I applaud the applicant for all their efforts to address many of our concerns. The age-restricted, I mean, that's just, you know, I support it, so.
I'm going to be like a broken record. I do support it as well, especially with the age-restricted, but I would like to see a sidewalk on Indian Wells Road. I don't know what the plan is from the comprehensive transportation plan, but this is really becoming quite a neighborhood, a set of neighborhoods, and I can really see a lot of people walking throughout these neighborhoods. I'd like to make it as safe as possible, so as, as we move forward, this is a perfect time to ask, moving forward, make sure that sidewalks are on both sides of those roads.
It is a requirement in this case on this road?
Good. Okay, great, then, there you go. Lori's happy. And there's no sweet gums. No, I don't.
Are we ready for a motion?
I move approval of rezoning 14 REZ 12.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consistency plan.
Move approval of a consistency statement for rezoning 14 REZ 12.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.5 was the Dellinger PDD that we tabled before we approved the agenda, so we'll see that at a later date, and that takes us to item 6.6. It's the amendment to the town noise ordinance regarding golf course facilities. Deputy Chief Godwin will present this item, and council may take action. Deputy Chief.
Good evening, council.
Thank you for being here when I know your Wolfpack is playing right now.
They are indeed. Fingers crossed.
Check the score.
I was going to say, not that we have it on the computers or anything.
No. What game? Just to avoid confusion.
It's 26-11.
I just did that for fun, sorry.
Sorry, we'll behave. All right. The police department, over the years, has received a few complaints about noise associated with golf course operations, and the noise ordinance generally prohibits the making of sound that exceeds 60 decibels affecting any residential structure. The decibel level by ordinance is measured at the nearest residential property line of the complainant. However, the use of lawn mowers and landscaping equipment is exempt from the noise ordinance during specified hours, Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. through 9:00 p.m., and on Saturdays and Sundays from 9:00 a.m. through 9:00 p.m. Additionally, the mowing of golf course greens is exempt from the noise ordinance from 6:00 a.m. through 9:00 p.m. during the months of April through September. Recently, we had a situation where a resident in McGregor Downs had complained about some of the operations going on there with the golf course. We worked with the golf course staff and with the resident, tried to reach a suitable conclusion, and we were unable to do that. So we came together, or I came before you back in the fall of last year, and was directed to take a look at the noise ordinance as it relates to the operation of golf courses. Since that time, we've had a few other citizens contact us with some similar complaints that we had heard from the McGregor Downs citizen, and those additional complaints have been noted to be a result of operations at both Lockmere and Prestonwood Golf Courses. After that direction to take a look at the ordinance, staff began by taking a look at numerous other communities and their noise ordinance for clarity on how they addressed golf course operations or landscaping equipment. The approach, we found, was widely varied as it relates to the hours when powered lawn mowers and landscaping equipment is permitted. While most communities allow work in or near residential areas to start between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., depending upon the day of the week, cutoff ranges, times ranged anywhere from 7:00 p.m. up to as far as 11:00 p.m., when you had to stop doing that kind of work. Other communities that we examined, none carved out any specific exceptions for golf course operations except for the town of Lake Forest. With regard to the community's ordinances, the methods used to measure the noise levels fell generally into two categories. One, an average taken over a set period of time, as is our current practice and has been our practice for some time, or a series of instantaneous readings taken over a set period of time with either a set number or a fraction of the total readings exceeding the decibel limit triggering a violation. The equipment that we currently have and use for that measurement is capable of doing either one of those. The other method that we see in some communities is to take a series of instantaneous readings with a limit of either a certain percentage of the readings exceeding the specified decibel limit or a specific number of times in excess of the prescribed decibel limit triggering the violation. The town of Apex and the city of Raleigh use these methods respectively, and in both jurisdictions, as many as 100 instantaneous readings are required to be taken in 10-second intervals. So in addition to looking at the timing of the golf course landscaping activity and the method of measuring noise violations, staff has identified a number of other areas in the ordinance that council may wish to clarify in an ordinance amendment. Specifically, we think that you may want to take a look at how we define golf course greens and also how we define the term mowing, which is used in that ordinance to permit the courses to start earlier from April through September. the courses to start earlier from April through September. Staff has prepared a table of those items and some options and recommendations, which is included in your staff report. There is no fiscal impact to note, other than if we do go with instantaneous readings, it could take more staff time in order to do those large number of instantaneous readings like some of our neighbors do. And staff requests tonight that council provide some direction and guidance for the items listed in the table, and staff can return to council at a later date with specific ordinance language. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. I've been contacted by the general manager of McGregor Downs, Mr. Curtis, and he's been in contact with the general managers of Prestonwood and Lockmere. And they would like to sit down with me, and I can't remember if Deputy Chief's in that meeting or not next week, but they want to talk about some issues. And the speaker tonight that spoke on this topic brought up some very good points. I would like to talk with them about certain equipment items, and I don't even know if we have authority to do anything about that. So they're asking for this item to be tabled, and I do see benefit in doing that. Usually, when we've had this much time on an item, I'm not usually in favor of tabling it, but I do see benefit in tabling it and getting more information and getting more input about if we limit types of equipment, what impact that would have on them and those kinds of things. So just letting council know, I think there was an email that was sent to council requesting that this item be tabled, but I wanted to let you know that I have had a phone call with Mr. Curtis. Other thoughts?
I think it's good.
Can we still ask?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe you said it and I didn't hear it, but when you were talking to some of the other municipalities, did you talk to any of the municipalities, like in the Pinehurst area? Because there's so many homes around so many golf courses, and I was just curious if you had any, you know, in your fact-finding, do you have any feedback from that area?
Yeah, interestingly enough, we didn't talk to anyone at Pinehurst, but we did look at their ordinance, first thing I thought of when talking about golf courses. And I was quite surprised that they do not carve out any exceptions for golf course operations.
They don't.
They do not.
Now, I guess the question, and this may be somewhat related to land use, and that is like the proximity to the homes, to the golf courses compared to us. And, you know, to me, what we have is like normal. I mean, anytime you have golf courses, you have that, but I don't know if you've found any, you know, distinction there. You know, my point is, this, whatever we decide, this is going to be a Hafnfield's and a McCoy's. I mean, this is just... I happened to have a lunch meeting the other day on a totally, not a town-related matter, and it happened to be with individuals living on a cul-de-sac at McGregor. And though the meeting was totally different, it came up, and I thought three couples were going to kill the other three couples. I mean, you know, on the street, there's complete disagreement. You know, there's the whole, you live on a golf course, you get the advantages of that, you put up with the sign, you know, the noise. And then the other ones, neighbors, were saying the exact opposite. So that's why I was just curious about, I don't hear this problem in other areas. And if you recall, some of the emails we got, there was one in Lockmere where one was like 219, whatever the street was, and the other was 221, and they were just polar opposites. And they're neighbors, you know? And it just, so I don't know where you go with this. Good luck.
Sounds like we should be...
You're welcome to join us.
No, thank you. I'm sick that day, I'm sure. But, I mean, I, you know, I think we have to look at how we deal with noise at amphitheaters and everything else like that, but, you know, my point was, when you were looking at those ordinance, did you get any sense of that divide, you know, in the communities? But like you said, with Pinehurst, you were just looking at the ordinance itself, correct?
That's correct.
Interesting. Good luck.
Thank you.
With respect to the question that the gentleman, Mr. Butler, brought up, I'd be interested in if that's possible to even separate noise based on the type of equipment.
Right.
I don't even know if that is...
That's what I was talking about. Do we have authority to do that kind of thing?
I don't know, and then, equipment changes over time. I mean, right? Obviously, wood chippers and chainsaws remain with chippers and chainsaw, but I'm sure a lot of the equipment they use on a golf course changes and evolves as new technologies come on. So I don't even know if we could do that, but that would be an interesting question as well. Did I understand you correctly that Pinehurst doesn't have any golf course noise regulations? Is that right?
We couldn't find anything in their ordinance that regulates or stipulates an exception to the noise ordinance with regard to when golf courses can start doing maintenance work, lawn maintenance type work differently than anybody else in the town.
That's kind of surprising.
I know. You mentioned Wake Forest was the only place you found where there was an exception. Do you know what that exception was? Is that similar to our exceptions?
It was similar to ours. It allowed an earlier start during certain months. Yes, sir.
I'm not opposed to tabling it, just for the sole sake of getting more information. I mean, I would hate to approve something and then turn around two weeks later and amend it and redo it, but, I mean, I'm genuinely supportive of what I see here. I mean, I think it helps clarify some of the, you know, questionable activities and times, but I kind of like what I see here. And I might be one of those neighbors that Jack was talking about, that if you live on a golf course, you kind of need to understand there's going to be some noise. Although I would also agree with Mr. Butler's comments about chainsaws, wood chippers, and blowers, you know? I mean, but, so it's, I'm not going to vote against tabling it. I mean, we'll get through this one day, but I'm kind of overall satisfied with what we've got here. I thank you guys for your work so far, I really do.
Yes, sir. Is there a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you, sir. We now move to items that were initially on the February 26th Agenda for Consent. I requested these items be moved for discussion, and staff is available. And these are the Herndon Property rezoning. And I'll go ahead and make my comments, and then we can have additional comments or a motion. But my concern was, I mean, there's always a place for transitional conditional use, and the property in question here has been before us, I don't know how many times. This is the best proposal I've seen so far, and it's really close to making me very happy, but it's not quite there yet. Transitional conditional use has usually to do with tiny lots, in this case, 5,000 square feet, and side yard setbacks that are very small, in this case, five feet. And those are my major concerns. Other than that, the density is low enough that I can accept it. And so other than that, I'm in favor of it, but I do have to vote against it based on what is before me. So that's why I pulled it. And that's the reasoning for pulling it. So I'm open to council members for other comments or questions or a motion.
Not that I think I'm going to change your mind, but I do want to point out a couple of things about this. One is, I do respect the fact that we often hear from Councilmember Robinson that we're waiting for great, right? And I often go, I roll my eyes sometimes. And this time, this time, I have to admit it, this is a much better solution, right? I really, I really think that waiting was the right thing for this case. I also have to respectfully disagree with the mayor. I think one of the things we learned in the recent Imagine Cary discussion, and I got to listen to all of you on tape, which was so lovely, was that our citizenry wants a variety of housing stock. They want to see some of these things that I think inside of us, we are not potentially want to buy ourselves, right? So a lot of us might not want to buy a 5,000-square-foot house or lot, sorry, not house, a house on 5,000 square feet or with a setback of five feet. But what we've learned from the Imagine Cary process and reading about what millennials want and what we're missing in Cary is a variety of this type of housing stock. And I think the smaller homes do bring in a new crop, if you will, of new citizenry, people who can afford these smaller homes. And I actually like to have something different in Cary. I think this is a great place to have it, and it's in a transitional use area. I'm thrilled to have something that I think is better than it was and also something different. And these kinds of neighborhoods are selling quite well in Raleigh. So I'm looking forward to voting in favor of this.
Other comments or a motion?
Just a question. We didn't give you a chance to present anything here, but I do have a question with the side setback. Tell me if I remember, I wrote a note here, but I'm not looking at the report itself, that this is five feet on each side.
Right.
Where the transitional zoning really requires a total of six feet.
Three.
So it could be three and three or four and two.
That's correct.
So this is five and five, so in a way exceeds...
It exceeds it by a small amount, yes.
My right shoulder depends, left shoulder.
Four feet.
Side, yeah, well, still, that's something. No, in my opinion, this is one that's been here a long time, too, and we've had a lot of neighborhood opposition all along. I've heard no neighborhood opposition this time around. As far as schools, I know it's just the elementary school, and who knows if the kids from this subdivision are going to be assigned to the school directly across the street? I guess stranger things have happened, but it makes sense. And that school has capacity for whatever that's worth. I like the large buffer, I like the right in, right out. And the thing I tell myself every time we saw this, but I wasn't, the rest of the conditions weren't quite there yet, but this time I think they are, the thing I keep telling myself is that really, this, most of this is now Wake County Highway commercial zoning. So, I mean, that, we could have any kind of commercial development, we could have a gas station, we could have a kennel, or even maybe an auto repair shop.
Gosh, the horrors.
So in a way, although it's residential and we're adding kids, 40 houses, but it is, in effect, a downzoning for the area. So all those things put together, I'm, this time, leaning toward support.
Do we, Mayor, do we take it with the annexation first and then the rezoning?
Yes.
I was just curious.
Sounds like there's not a lot of opposition, so I think it's safe to move forward with the annexation.
I'm not going to say anything because I don't want to repeat what's already been said. I'd like to go home and watch the basketball.
Motion to annex?
So I'll make a motion to approve the Lannan Shirley Herndon Annexation 14 A 17.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Follow-up motion for rezoning?
I'll make a motion to approve the Herndon Property rezoning 14 REZ 33.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries four to two. Consistency statement?
Make a motion to approve the consistency and reasonableness statement for rezoning 14 REZ 33 for the Herndon Property.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. And that concludes those items with the Herndon Property. We'll now go into closed session, and we may come out and take action after the closed session, just making that statement. Would someone like to read a motion to take us into closed session?
Pursuant to GS 143-31811A1 and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143318.10E.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we're now in closed session. Motion carries unanimously, and we're now in closed session.